Good evening. Welcome to the Bryan City Board of Education's April meeting tonight. We will start with the call to order with the Pledge of the Flag. We have Boy Scouts with us this evening. I was wondering if we could have a couple of the gentlemen come up. This is impromptu. Come up and join us, just lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Start with roll call, please.
Scott Benedict.
Here.
Sandra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stocker. Here. Thank you.
In front of you, you have the regular March Board meeting minutes as well as the March 25th special meeting minutes. If there are no changes or corrections, I'll take a motion to move.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Sandra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, first, we would like to start out with public participation. And in that, we will have our communications. I am not sure how to say this and make it sound right. It's a wonderful thing to see, you know, wonderful to have you all here with us tonight. Not that the reason that you're all here is started off on the right way, but we had an amazing, happy ending. We're here to celebrate Brayden Scholwalder. We would like to start with his mother, Jennifer King. I think she has a few words that I would like to have her come up and say.
Hi. Well, this is quite a special crowd and lineup for someone who has never spoken publicly. I want to start by saying that my family and I, especially Brayden, want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. I'm sure most, if not all, of you are aware of what has brought us together tonight to the special board meeting. How awesome is it that we can join together in a celebration of a victory, specifically a victory over death? For on that day, Monday, February 25th, 2019, I received the scariest phone call of my life. I don't think any of us right away actually understood the magnitude of what had happened. Sudden cardiac arrest was the farthest thing from my mind. My son had always been a seemingly healthy, athletic teenage boy with no signs or symptoms leading up to the event. I think this is what makes it so shocking and difficult for people to wrap their mind around. You always think things like this happen to other people far away. I'm sure for Brayden's coaches, they would say that this is forever impact them as well. My wish to them is I hope they don't view it as a traumatic experience. I hope they view it as one of the greatest wins of their careers. The Bryan basketball coaches and school nurse exemplified not only to the players and our school, but to our entire community and beyond, exactly what it takes to be a team. The coaches and nurse never missed a beat. Pun intended. With Lindsay's law now in place, I believe people are becoming more aware that these situations can and do exist. I have personally gotten to know Lindsay Davis over the past few days, in whom Lindsay's law is named after. Lindsay was diagnosed with hypertrophic cardiomyopathy at the age of 17, the same condition that Brayden was originally diagnosed with. She has been a tremendous support and encouraging and guiding me in the direction of proposing legislation in which I feel passionate about. Currently, there are only 17 states in our nation mandated to have AEDs in public schools. Ohio is not one of those states. There are five states that are only recommended to have an AED placement, with Ohio being one of those recommended states. I am so grateful that the decision was made to have an AED available at our school. The doctors believe that this is what saved him because CPR alone would not have gotten his heart back in rhythm. I also greatly appreciate the laws that have moved forward in making CPR, AED a requirement of our youth curriculum. However, how can we expect them to utilize their knowledge if needed without the proper tools in place? This being mandatory AEDs in place at schools within our state. I also feel it important to require all teachers to hold a valid certification in CPR, the Heimlich maneuver in AED use, like our neighboring state of Indiana, Michigan, and Illinois. This can be accomplished by adding it to the teacher certificate curriculum as part of the certification or recertification. Lastly, my hope is to see reform regarding sports physicals and screenings. I would like to bring attention to the dangers of pop-up clinics and physicals given by qualified individuals, an example being chiropractors, without knowledge of heart conditions or time to review prior family history. This is Brayden's story to be happily continued. Thank you.
Nick?
How you doing? Brayden's father. I didn't write anything down. Seems like I sent a lot of texts that week that he was down, and it seemed like probably the longest week to the family, but when he was up at Toledo and at the University of Michigan, it didn't seem probably that long to him because he had his coaches, his friends, friends' parents, everybody was there. At one point, he turned the light out because he was going to take a nap, and then a group of seven friends showed up and they wheeled in a Playstation. So to Brayden, I don't think he understood how, I mean, how close it really was. And at the basketball meeting, Fisher said 37 last year, and they lost 17 of them. They lost him because they didn't have those defibrillators probably on hand. And when he was getting ready to go into surgery, me and his mom were talking to the surgeon, and we were going through our heads of what he did different this year. And I said, you know, he was injured at a game, and he was on a predozone pack, and I thought that. The surgeon shook it off and said, nope. And he said, this was coming. So it was coming, meaning if it happened in his bedroom, it wouldn't have been good. And I'm just thankful it happened for you guys.
So as we said at the beginning, tonight, we're here to celebrate. We're here to celebrate Brayden and the win that we got that day. And to do that, we're going to start with the Board of Education honoring those who played an integral role in Brayden's survival. And that's what I heard as the story kept getting told over and over again, was without this, without this person, without this machine, without this response, Brayden would not be with us today. So if we could have those being honored to come up and stand maybe beside Mrs. Updike, and we have, starting with the Board of Education, commendations for your actions, for your response, for your, Alyssa, come on up, for your determination in making sure that this was a positive outcome. And Sandra, if you'd like to hand out the certificates. So first, we have Alyssa Nieschwanger with Parkview. She is our athletic trainer. She is a partnership with the medical group and with the Bryan Hospital, and we are very fortunate that she was on hand at the practice. We have Coach Brandon Fisher. We have our school nurse, Joyce Seehold, who happened to still be at school and on the campus that day because of a meeting, who raced over to help in the situation. Coach Steve Lamberson. Coach Blake Rocky. And Coach Maurice Suver. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you, and stay right where you are, because we have quite a few other honors to present. So. Next, on behalf of the city, we have Chief Willis, Chief Siders, and from the county They are presenting commendations on behalf of Mayor Kerry Schlade and the Bryan City Next, we have State Representative Jim Hoops.
This is a great day. You know, this really shows it takes a community to raise a child. And because you just never know, the timing on who's here, the timing of where you were at this time, and the memories of this happening. And I was wondering if I should share this or not, but I think I will, because you just never know. I had a brother, when I was down at Northwest State, Louisiana, he came down there with me, and I was a sophomore, and he was a freshman, and the same thing happened to him, and he did not survive. And so you don't know how I feel to have this young man here, and who knows what God has for you yet, Brayden. You know, just the things that you're going to be able to do because of these individuals here. And it is a day to celebrate, because so many things can happen in life, and I'm just glad that I was invited to come here tonight to present these proclamations to these individuals here. And the other thing, too, I even called former Senator Hite, because he had something to do with the AED machines that the coaches had to train on these things. And he can remember people saying, well, I'll never have to use that. Why am I doing this training? And I think you're a great example of you just never know. And again, thank you for taking the time to train for these things, because you just never know. So again, I want to thank all of you and all of you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next, representing the Lieutenant Governor's Office, Lou Cook.
It's really a privilege to be here tonight, and what an amazing family you have here with you tonight. Everyone being honored here tonight, I know, played a role, and a lot of things needed to come together very quickly. And obviously, you kept your composure, you followed directions from others under high stress, and you all came together to save the life that's sitting here tonight. So tonight, we honor, we celebrate, and support you, and say thank you. You were the difference between life and death. You are all amazing people being honored here tonight. And you each will have a proclamation from the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and I'll read it real quick. Says, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Ohio, Mike Dwyane and John Houston, Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Ohio, do hereby officially recognize each, every one of you. On behalf of the State of Ohio, we thank you for the life-saving actions that you took on February 25th, 2019. Your swift decision-making on that day saved the life of a student, and the Bryan City School District is lucky to have you. Your commitment and dedication to making a positive difference have made your community and Ohio a better place to live, work, and raise a family. On this 15th day of April, 2019, Mike Dwyane, Governor, John Houston, Lieutenant Governor." Thank you.
hear from one, the most important person here, and that's Brayden. So Brayden, if you'd like to say a few words?
So I just want to give a few thanks to all the coaches and Alyssa and Joy for everything they've done for me, saving me. And I want to give a thanks to everybody else from coming out here tonight, and just thank you all for your time. This means a lot.
What a blessing to have all of these fine individuals on our staff, and what a blessing you are, Brayden, to be in our district. Thank you all. We are going to take a brief break, because there's some pictures that you would like to take before we get started with our regular Board of Education meeting. And thank you. What a great celebration. Appreciate you all being here. Good evening. We're going to continue on with the Bryan City Schools Board of Education meeting. Next up will be our public hearing portion of our meeting, which will encompass new business. And I think Mr. Bassett is going to join us for that.
Good evening. Just want to give an update on our federal grants to stay in this year before we reapply for next year. Those allocations for the following year usually come out in June. We submit our application and get our allocations at the end of June for next school year. For this school year, for Title I, which is improving academic achievement, once again, we're a school-wide program. Some schools are targeted assistance, where we can only help certain kids. We're a school-wide program, so we can use that money to help all of our students. Received this year, total allocation is $358,751. Of that, non-public, so our parochial schools and non-public schools within our district receive part of that money. We are the fiscal agent for them, but the money flows through us. They receive $5,376. With our Title I money this year, we're able to pay for 4.8 teachers, who have to offset their salaries and fringe benefits. So just under five teachers there. Title II-A, which is a class-size reduction grant, this year, the allocation is $56,774. $63.99 is for the non-publics. We use that this year in grade five. We have a large number in grade five, so we use that to offset a teacher, about 0.6 of a teacher, again, salary and fringe benefits there. Our Title III, Limited English Proficient Grant, this, we joined a consortium, we do not have a large population of LVP students, we joined a consortium with the Northwest Ohio Educational Services Center. Our share of that is $1,900. We use that, we do have a few students that are limited English proficient, we use that for tutoring, of English tutoring for those students. Title IV-A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, $24,894 is our total allocation. $1,923 is a non-public share. We use that to pay for our school social worker, a portion of that salary, that we're very fortunate to have, our school social worker, so that helps with that expense. IDAV Special Education Grant is our largest grant, $487,151. $49,000 of that is non-public share. With that, we're able to pay for six teachers in our special ed program. So a really nice grant there to help our general fund. IDAV, sorry, not IDAV, but IDA, Early Childhood Special Education, $15,594. Again, this goes for our preschool salary. This is, we use for preschool education, so we help pay for one of our preschool teachers for that. Questions on grants? I rattled off numbers on our grants real quick there, their federal grants. There's no way of telling whether those allocations go up from next to next year or they go down. It's just kind of a waiting game. We'll submit the application, we'll get it approved, and we'll wait for the dollars to roll in.
We appreciate you being on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Food service update, I'll just jump through that instead of going to wellness. Fortunately, Mr. Savage, if that's okay. This year is our year, every three years, ODE comes and does a complete administrative review of our food service program. That is this year. So we're in the middle of that right now. There's two components of it. There's an upload, where you upload just a ton of documentation about our food service program, and then they look it over, and they have a phone interview with you. You go through it all. I just completed that this week, and they've signed off on everything on the phone interview, which is great news. They will come onsite then in May, and they'll watch service from breakfast through lunch. They will be at our elementary school. And they'll look at serving sizes, they'll look at our menu, look at everything we do on a daily basis. So it'll be early part of May. As far as this year, we average about 1,000 Type A lunches a day. That includes our salad bar, we offer a salad bar as a Type A option in this building, the middle school, high school, which is a great alternative for our students that maybe you're going free reduced, and they get a Type A every day, they have an alternative. They can go to the salad bar, and you can count that as a complete meal. They get a dinner roll and local fat as well. Again, we have a rotation menu. And in our rotation menu, we have two days that are allocated as Cook's Choice days. We use that really to try and test out new items, to see if the kids like it. Last week, we had Cook's Choice at the elementary, we had whole grain-breaded chicken drumstick, and the elementary kids thought it was the greatest thing ever, they got any chicken off of bone. So that'd be something we'll probably bring back. You just never know what's gonna, we try some different things, what they're gonna like, and what they think's neat. And someone was funny, they went to the line, they didn't know what a chicken drumstick was, but boy, when they saw it, then they knew what it was. So that was kind of fun. If you look at our menu, we monitor, you know, what sells, what's our top sellers. Everybody always asks me, popcorn, chicken, spaghetti, chili, chicken strips, and mashed potatoes, and chicken noodles. It seems like we put mashed potatoes with anything, the kids love it. Fortunately, we can't serve that every day. We require that, but we do try to get it in there. Questions on food service?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Thank you.
That well secured, I was going to move that. But I'm here on behalf of Casey Thormeyer, who is the lead of our school wellness team. You have a handout at your place. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I just want to highlight a little bit of what our school wellness team does. So we partner with our Northern Buckeye Health Plan, as well as Fitness Fusion, to set monthly wellness pillars, to provide educational literature to our staff, to compete for monthly bonus challenges, and we provide online resources. So each month, we put on our Wellness Warrior hats, and we try to either exercise for 30 minutes a day, or complete maybe a water challenge, a nutritional challenge, a sleep challenge, anything to get us healthier. Down at the bottom, you see the themes for each month, and then on the backside, you'll see the how. We receive a grant totaling $4,100 from our health consortium, NBHP, and we follow the be essential, be innovative, be committed, and be enthusiastic. So again, on behalf of the Wellness Committee, we thank them for their work throughout the year, and you can see where this grant money goes. Questions? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Osmond, do you want to make? That will conclude our public hearing portion of our Board of Education meeting. We'll move on to the treasurer's report. Recommendations, please?
Okay, thank you. We'll start with our financial reports for the month ended March 31, 2019. At Farmers and Merchant State Bank, our balance was $5,291,015, or outstanding checks and adjustments totaled $74,946. Investments at Star Ohio, $917,958. At UBS Financial, $4,289,804. At State Bank, $6,319,157. And at Star Ohio Plus, $2,448,978. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,400. Total funds on hand at the end of March, $19,199,366. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $14,420,901. Our bond retirement fund, $1,637,992. And our permanent improvement fund, $1,916,377. And our SM2 report, I made some adjustments this month to bring our budget up to date. Our revenues are about $144,000 ahead of budget. Our expenses are about $11,000 under budget, so a positive variance of about $133,000. Excuse me, our expenses are $11,000 over budget. Our variance is $133,000. Any questions regarding those reports?
Thank you.
Not, we'll look at amended appropriations for the fiscal year. Appropriation total at this time, $27,992,876. During the month, we had adjustments to appropriations totaling $7,568. Any questions regarding the amended appropriations? Not, we'll move on. We ask the Board's authorization to establish account 200, or Fund 2967B for the class of 2025. Seeing how I graduated in 1975, that's making me feel pretty old. That's 50 years ago. So we'll establish that fund for the upcoming seventh-grade class of next year. We ask the Board's authorization to transfer a half mil of the fiscal year 2019 property tax revenue from the permanent improvement fund to the OFCC project maintenance fund. This is required by our OFCC project agreement. We ask also the Board's authorization to transfer the net difference between the rental income and the operating expenses for the central education building, where we rent that space, and that will be transferred to the permanent improvement fund. That's an annual transfer that we make at the end of the fiscal year. We ask the Board's authorization to advertise for bread bids, which we handle on an annual basis, as well as milk bids. We ask the Board's authorization to allow us to participate once again this year in the OHI Charter Workers Compensation Group Rating Program, which we belong to for several years now. We have one then and now certificate this month with Northwest State Community College for $7,198. That was for college credit plus tuition. Some donations we'd like to recognize this month, $275 from the Williams County YMCA for the Youth and Government Program, $300 from Lori Wolf for the golf. from Lori Wolfe for the golf team, a bench donated by the class of nineteen seventy-one, which now sits at the entrance to our six-to-twelve entrance. Value is nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Several donations from the Athletic Booster Club, two thousand three hundred ten dollars for volleyball uniforms, one thousand dollars for wrestling uniforms, three thousand five hundred dollars for cheerleading uniforms, one thousand three hundred eighty dollars for girls' basketball uniforms, and one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars for athletic banners. We'll stop it there.
That's quite, quite a list, Mr. Rossworm. Thank you. Do, do we have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Cool.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Next, I would like to make a recommendation to the Board of Education that we employ Chad Savage as a consultant for the period July, June one, two thousand nineteen through July thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, in accordance with terms of a written contract. This will take care of athletic department administration duties this summer, on a per diem basis, up to limit of ten days.
Okay. I will take a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Cool.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. I am not aware of all business. Do you have anything on the list to remove? Okay, then we'll move on to new business. And under new business, we would like to accept with regret the retirement of Mr. Rossworm as our treasurer CFO effective July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Is there any discussion? No? Mike? Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you, Mike. Mike moved, second, please?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Tom.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure, and, you know, I, I've been blessed, thinking back to when my dad kicked me out of the house, told me it was time to get a job in nineteen seventy-seven. These years have gone by very quickly, and I, I've been truly blessed and worked with many great people in this community and throughout the business world, as a result of my positions here in Williams County and with Bryan City School District. I've enjoyed working with this board, as well as past boards, and I wish great success for our community and for our school district as it moves forward.
Yeah, Rob, and, you know, on behalf of board, or at least speaking, I think, on behalf of the board, I'll speak mainly for myself, you know, going back to when we first brought you, when we first hired you, and I guess, how many years ago was that?
Two thousand five, I think it's fourteen years ago.
Now, this seems like yesterday. But when we brought you on, we asked you to do certain things to help us in terms of the budgeting, the going back to zero-based budgeting, to help us gain control of the budgets. You've implemented that policy or that program, and I think it's been a meaningful result of it, and, and I think it, it goes a long way to where, you know, the financial position that we're in today, and I just, you know, hopefully, on behalf of past boards in particular, and hopefully this board, I'd just like to extend our appreciation for your efforts in fulfilling the requests we made of you when we first hired you.
Thank you. I've had a lot of great people to work with. I thank Mrs. Savage, all the other administrators here in the district, and especially the citizens of this community who support us so well. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. We have year-round for a while.
I'm going to get to know my golf clubs and my fishing boat a lot better.
Well, not too soon. All right, we'd like to move on with the superintendent's recommendations this evening.
Okay, so under administrative recommendations, first of all, as we discussed last month, we are bringing to the board approval of change to lunch prices for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. We worked with Mr. Bassett, Mr. Rossworm to analyze the budgets and bring these recommendations to you. So, you see those listed. Adult prices would go to three sixty-five, six-to-twelve building, three fifteen, pre-K to five building, two ninety, breakfast, a dollar sixty, and milk at fifty cents. It's also time to start planning for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year in terms of workbook and supply fees. And one of the other items we brought up last month was the preschool tuition. So, that has increased to eighty-five dollars per month, but the fees for kindergarten through grade twelve will remain the same, fifty dollars for kindergarten through eight and nine through twelve, a hundred and ten. We'd like to designate the week of May sixth to tenth as Employee Recognition Week for Bryan City Schools, and we'll welcome the board members to visit with our staffs. We'll set that up during that week. I'm asking for approval to sign the membership agreement for the OHSAA, Ohio High School Athletic Association, for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, for both our middle school and high school student athletes. Under student commendations, we have our All-A Honor Roll for middle school and high school.
Do we want to, do a roll call for the recommendations?
Uh, we can. Do you want me to stop there? I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Yep.
Okay. Cool. I'd like a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. No, thank you very much. So, student commendations, we have the All-A Honor Roll for grades six through twelve. We also have the High School Student Action Award for February and March. I would like to highlight and congratulate McKenna Groob, whose work, artwork was selected as the top twenty-five in the two thousand nineteen Ohio Governors Youth Art Exhibition, and she will receive the two thousand nineteen Governors Award of Excellence. And then also, congratulations to Junior Elizabeth Wolfe for being selected as our four counties' Career Center Student of the Month. At Bryan Elementary, we commend our students for the character traits of compassion, tolerance, and generosity, and we also recognize our Mrs. Elston's Classroom for being PBIS Sportsmanship Award, and our Gold Slip winners in PE for March were Paisley Clark, London Villalabos, and Michaela Asbury.
Okay, that's quite a big list there. I will take a motion to approve the student commendations from the superintendent.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mike.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, there are a few changes. It is time to recommend to the board for teacher contracts. All of the teachers that are listed here were evaluated using the OTAS, which is the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, full model, and they are being recommended for continued employment with our district. So, one-year contracts are being offered to Tracy Cook, Heather Crum, Megan Grimm, Sarah Huwer, Nicole Hurst, Rachel Mann, Lindsay Stack, Leah Sturt, Alicia Bowers, Samantha Foles, Todd Grossjean, and Jacob Sturt. Two-year limited contracts to Caleb Beatty, Zeb Frank, Tracy Lamberson, Lauren Lockwood, Sarah Novacek, Jessica Root, Callie Thiel, Sarah Vashaw, Matt Dominic, Brad Eichhoff, Mindy Kepler, and Angel Reinick. Three-year limited teaching contract to Stephanie Ruffer, Olivia Elkins, Brandon Fisher, Sierra Rorick, Corbin Walker, and Jordan Whitler. Four-year limited teaching contracts to Christine Alt, Caitlin Bernath, Andrea Sims, Brandon Gordon, Spencer Graber, Ben Lupo, and Betsy Schlosser. Five-year limited teaching contracts to Amy Von Dalen, Andrew Bentley, Joyce Golees, and Catherine Rocky, and a continuing teaching contract to Megan Lidle-Steele. You see the PT Rachel Gurkin therapist contract on again, that is because we had an incorrect date when we approved that last month, so we would like to ask the board to correct that action, and it would be a three-year administrative contract beginning August first of two thousand nineteen. Certified personnel, every spring, we work with students who have not yet passed the third grade reading test. Elizabeth Cummins will be our tutor, at ten hours total, at tutor rate effective May, or April fifteenth to May seventh. Auxiliary, auxiliary services personnel at Saint Pat's for the nineteen, twenty school year, Callie Thiel as a full-time intervention specialist, and Stephanie Lemoore as auxiliary services personnel clerk, two hours per day for ninety days out of the year. I'm recommending a new hire of Marcia Koller, six-to-twelve dishroom, effective April ninth. A transfer, as we begin to prepare for next year, Jessica Root to third to fifth grade intervention specialist, and Sierra Rorick to third to fifth grade MD teacher. We had to add an additional MD unit because of the number of students that we have that require those services. We talked about that, I believe, in January and February. Certified substitutes, Roger Pence and Colin Parcher. With regret, we also accept the resignations of Joe Back, Transportation Director, effective March thirteenth. Joe went on to an opportunity in another district. Ken Harris, Bus Driver, effective March twenty-ninth. Ken, as well, went on to another opportunity in the community. Amy Brock as fifth grade teacher, effective April first, and Heidi Stark as preschool teacher, effective June thirtieth. Any questions regarding those recommendations?
If not, I'll take a motion to accept the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Under policy, this is not up for vote this month. This is just a first reading of the policy changes recommended by Miola. Again, those are available to you online on our website. If you have any questions about any of those policies, please let me know. Under port, points of information, there is the state, and I don't believe, I've got lots of notes tonight. Oh, I do. Remembered it. I have, the Cup Patterson Work Group has been working on a new state funding formula, and they have released just their initial proposal, and they've also released some initial budget numbers. They're trying to get the funding formula to be more equitable across the state. There are still, I would say at this point, and I'll ask Mr. Rossworm for his opinion, but I would say that at this point, this is very preliminary. I think there'll be a lot of changes and tweaks, if it's even accepted, because this would move us away from our current funding formula. Do you have any other thoughts on that?
From what I've read, I, I agree that there's a long way to go on this legislation. They have begun to debate it and pick it apart in the House, but I believe it has, it has merits, has some good points, but I think there's some districts who are bringing up some exceptions, and especially those with high poverty level students. So, there's a lot of work to do on this. Just talking with Representative Hoops a little bit ago about the budget process and, you know, the, the committee meetings that are taking place, and, you know, it'll be a couple of weeks probably before the House has their version of the budget, and then we'll get into the Senate's version, and then the compromise committee gets together, and so we have a ways to go, but the process is certainly beginning, and this isn't a bad piece of legislation, it just, it has some weaknesses in certain areas that I think they're gonna have to work through. So, we'll see where it goes. But for Bryan City Schools, the original estimates were, were very positive for us for the next two years, should they go down that path.
Yeah. Wait and see. Just a reminder, our next Board of Ed meeting will be May twentieth, back at the Fieldhouse Board Room at seven PM. Our Business Advisory Committee will meet May fourteenth at seven AM in the Fieldhouse Conference Room. Our LPDC meeting is to be determined. And then tonight, we'll have our administrators come up to the podium. You actually have a microphone. We'll start with Mr. Ruffer in our athletic department.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. I had some events I had to cover and stuff throughout. I guess I'd like to start off with talking to Rob real quick. First off, I appreciate the last four years. You've made my job easier, which I can appreciate any person who does that, especially coming from a guy who pretty much only knew personal finances at home and stuff like that. We've worked a lot, and I appreciate what you've done, and any evolving partner, give me a call, so. I just got some updates. I'll talk a little bit about winter, but I think they kind of updated you about some good things we had going on in the winter, and I'll talk where we're at in the spring. Track, our most recent thing, they, they went down to Minster, kind of long drive down there. The boys finished third last weekend, and the girls were eighth. They travel even further down to Eaton by Dayton this Thursday, day before Good Friday, for another invite. And then we also host our League Meet, which starts Tuesday, May seventh, at two PM out here, so if you get a chance to stop by, it's great. And the finals are Friday evening at seven o'clock, May tenth. So, a couple of things we, we got going with track coming up. Boys tennis, they're off to a real good start, eight-no this season. They played, I believe, tonight, and then they have kind of a neat one, the doubles tournament next, or this weekend, Saturday, they travel over to Arch Bowl, they play Defiance, Arch Bowl Guasian in Napoleon, and kind of do a little different match than what they used to, four doubles teams, and they kind of go at it. It's kind of neat to see. Softball, they actually played tonight at Swan. We're kind of in limbo on whether we're gonna play baseball or softball tonight. Push the game back to six o'clock, so they're probably wrapped up by now. A big late game over there. They start, believe it or not, sectionals in a couple of weeks here, first full week of May, is their sectional, sectional week. Baseball, same thing, they're over at Swan tonight. We're fortunate enough to get it in, push the game back again. They're overall currently four and six, and they do it a little bit different this year. They used to line up sectional in districts and stuff like that. They've added a week to baseball season, so they'll, they'll be a week after sectional softball. And also, we get, we host some D-four tournaments, some smaller schools out here the following weeks for those. And then, last but not least, I think this was mentioned probably in my absence, just some winter things. Had a real good showing with boys and girls down at State Swim. Got some more pictures to add to the wall theme, so we're excited about that. Been working with Mrs. Groob, Mr. Deff, getting those arranged and stuff like that, and obviously our girls bowling team, outstanding accomplishment of being state runners-up. We got the trophy in a case. I think they took pictures this weekend, we'll get those things up. And we are going to honor them, actually, at EBC Awards, May twentieth. We'll do a kind of short little presentation, kind of trying to find, it's tough to find an audience in the spring to present some awards and some recognition, so talked to Mr. Brary and a few others, and got that arranged. We don't have all the details there, we're kind of in the preliminary stages of setting that up, so once those details come out, we'll kind of get those out to the community. That's all I've had as far as athletics, unless you have any questions for me this time. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Good evening again. I just have a real short testing update. We're in the middle of testing season, so it seems like every day we are testing someone. We did complete the ACT, state mandated ACT test. We had a couple of kids absent, so we had to do some emergency makeups. We did, everybody completed. We have completed third and fourth and fifth grade ELA testing. We did that, completed that last week. We tested over there every day of the week last week, I think except for Friday. We made some makeups on Friday to get everybody going online. Today, we completed day one of the English Language Arts Assessment in this building. We tested sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, English one, and English two, all at the same time. So, we're so grateful for technology capabilities, that we're gonna test all those in one day. We'll do day two tomorrow, and then we'll start into science here later in the week, and then we'll go into math next week, so it just continues to, continues to roll, but we're very fortunate to have the capabilities we have, we can test that large number of kids at the same time. Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hi there. I thought I would recap a little bit from March, because we weren't, I was not present here in March at the board meeting. So, on March thirteenth, on our grandparents' Day, we had one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two visitors visiting our preschool through fifth grade students, so we had a Hi there. I thought I would recap a little bit from March because we weren't, I was not present here in March at the Board meeting. So on March 13, on our Grandparents' Day, we had 1,132 visitors visiting our preschool through fifth grade students, so we had a great turnout. It was during Right to Read Week. We did things a little bit differently and we were thrilled with the amount of attendance that we had that night. So thank you to everyone that made special arrangements. We did have people fly in for Grandparents' Day, so it was a really special event. March 28 and 29, we did have kindergarten screening where we screened 125 students. June, we have so far 13 scheduled and we screened 65 of our preschool students for the following year. We had 230 students meet their accelerated reader goal. They were treated to fries from McDonald's. Our third, fourth, and fifth graders, we were really excited. Mrs. Thormeyer worked really hard. Their teachers set goals with them in reading, so 230 students out of grades third, fourth, and fifth grade met their AR goal. On April 1, we had around 32 teachers go to McDonald's for McTeacher Night. This was 100% organized by one of our staff members, Britten Bosco. She worked with Jim Ravello, the owner of McDonald's. The day that we came in, he had shirts ready for us, purple and gold balloons all over McDonald's. I actually directed traffic with Jim because we had traffic wrap all the way, I had some shaking hands. We had traffic wrap all the way around. So today, Jim came in and he presented Bryan Elementary with a check for $1,020, so that was super exciting. We did have two winning classes that showed the most attendance and that was Mrs. Sanders' first grade class and Mrs. Crum's third through fifth grade class. We have a big recognition assembly where students will be, there will be awards given out for perfect attendance, character traits, star scores, and art, music, and PE awards will be given out on May 17. That is what we call our BE Awards Recognition Assembly. Our Standards-Based Grading Committee met today and we feel that it's time to let our parents know, our community know, that Bryan Elementary will be moving to trimesters next year. This is something that we did talk with our staff. In the research we've done, the elementary schools that have went from standards-based grading to standards-based grading found that moving to trimesters where you have more time for students to learn, proficiency, longer time at the beginning of the year for students to acclimate, and more time to correct areas of concern during that grading period. This is also one of the things that was brought up at our Standards-Based Grading Meeting with parents at the beginning of the year. So that letter will go home to parents at the end of April, letting them know what our plan is for the following year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know they're no longer here, but just being able to witness the amazing that happened firsthand to save Ryan's life, it was truly a miracle. And for all the individuals involved, we thank them again. But again, I know they're not here, but it's just something that continues to replay through my mind. And Rob, congratulations. I wish you the best as you end the rest of this school year here. Some congratulations and thank yous are going out. We just had some, a group of students return from Columbus. They were at the State House down there participating in the Youth and Government Activity Event and they were with students from all across Ohio, basically participating in a mock legislation. And they were able to sit in the seats of our elected officials and live out the process. And we've got some neat pictures from them and it was a neat experience for them, so we are glad that they had a wonderful time, great experiences, and had a safe trip back. Also to our Spring Musical cast and crew, they just finished up their show not too long ago. Your good man Charlie Brown, they did a fantastic job as always. So we give them credit for all of their time, energy, and effort and to the directors that make that possible. Our seniors continue to rise to the occasion every year. They just recently participated in the CEO Day event and we were fortunate to have 25 local business representatives on hand to put all of our seniors through a mock interview experience. It's a fantastic day where the seniors are able to put their skills to the test. It's purposely set a few days before the Bryan Area Foundation Scholarship Interviews so that they can get their feet wet and get prepared for the real deal. But again, thank you to the business representatives. Each year they always say, I think I got just as much out of it as the students did, so we're very fortunate to have them volunteer their time. We have a busy spring. It's fourth quarter. So with that, as Mr. Bassett noted, we're in the middle of state testing here in our building. Just some dates to note to you, we have a new one this year. We're having our first ever senior breakfast on April 26. So what we're doing is we do an annual senior picture or senior photo that goes to our local media. But afterwards, we have some senior interns, Kennedy Lamberson and Lexi Deech, that have had the idea for some fellowship time with our seniors. We're going to bring them all together here in our cafeteria and they're going to have a breakfast and they're going to see senior slideshows, they're going to talk about senior superlatives, they're going to have a guest speaker on hand and it's going to be a great time of fellowship for those seniors to remember their many years here at Bryan Schools. And then afterwards, we thought it would be a great opportunity for them to celebrate what their next step of life is. So we're going to have a senior signing day following the breakfast. So the breakfast will run from approximately 8:15 to 10:15 and then we're going to host a senior signing day. We're encouraging all of our seniors to invite their parents and loved ones to come celebrate with them. We're going to have the media drop, media backdrop set up so they can get a photograph and a microphone there and they're going to sign away what they plan to move on to in the future. So we want to celebrate those going to college universities, those going into the military, those going into the workforce, tech schools, whatever it may be. We're going to celebrate that with them. We're looking forward to that on April 26. Speaking with our seniors, our graduation practice is not far away. That's Friday, the 24th. And just to remember, our graduation ceremony is Sunday, May 26 at 2:00 PM right here in the gym at Bryan Middle High School. And we invite anyone from the public who wishes to attend our Humanities Expo. We have a big day coming up here, May 3rd. It's a Friday. We're going to put on display, we've been working with, our English department has been working closely with the Bryan Area Foundation, celebrating the 50th anniversary this year and the main theme is philanthropy. So what our English department has done is worked with students to host a slew of interviews with those who have been able to give back to the community and to understand what that means to give back. So you will see on display all of the stories involved with that process. Plus you get to see many great exhibits with our arts on display and you'll see our music programs performing throughout the middle of the day. So if you're free, come on out. We'd love to have you. That's right in the middle of the day, over the lunch hour. So that's on Friday, May 3. And then we have prom. Believe it or not, prom is just a few weeks out, so that's coming up here on Saturday, May 11. Thank you.
Thank you.
Full schedule. Thanks. Do you have a question about the EBC Awards? What time will those be held, on May 20?
It's a 7:00 field.
Same time as our school board meeting.
And then our senior scholarship night is a week before that, May 13. Again, a 7:00 field.
There are not many days in spring available with competitions and awards banquets in a shorter end of school. I know that we looked at trying to accommodate as much as we could, but it's getting hard to find a date. Would you agree?
Yes.
For all of the celebrations.
Okay. I'm not aware of any other open board issues at this point in time or things to discuss. However, we do have a reason to go into executive session under E matters required to be kept commodified by federal law rules or state statutes. I'm not aware of, are there any other purposes for executive session, Mr. Savage, that I'm not aware of?
I would say A, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee.
Okay. Then also A. Thank you. I will take a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Scott?
Scott?
Scott and Mike and Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I don't expect any action. If there is any, we will definitely let you know. I appreciate the Boy Scouts being here with us this evening. Thank you. Thank you for sitting through the meeting with us and helping us with the pledge this evening. Appreciate your time to be here tonight and all that showed up this evening to celebrate Brayden. Thank you. We'll see you next month.